Like to call to order the March 23rd, 2021, 5:00 PM Board of Supervisors, Lancaster County Board of Supervisors or Budget Work Session. You have, the speakers, when you come forth, you have five minutes to speak. And when you get down to four minutes, I'm gonna hold this sign up that says you have one minute left. Okay, so I'm gonna do that for you. All right. So, the first one we have is Ms. Cockrell, River Realm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you guys hear me, or do I sound too muffled?
You can pull that down.
Okay, you're good with that? All right, thank you, I appreciate that. First of all, it's my pleasure to be back with you again, this time, every year. And I just wanna be, say, first of all, thank you so much for all the support that you've given Virginia's River Realm from the very beginning. I think that you see from what you have before you that we've got tremendous traction, even in a year when we had a COVID pandemic that you would think would stop travel in its tracks, so to speak. We had more website activity than ever, up 46%. We had more new visitors. We were able to send potential visitors through our platforms directly to individual businesses. And as a result, we certainly had more visitors here in the region, starting in March, than we anticipated. And I think fortunate for all of us, the sales tax revenue piece reflects that. Whether they found us through Virginia's River Realm, or they found us by looking at the COVID map, we certainly had the benefit of lots of additional folks here spending money during the course of 2020. Really, what I wanted to share with you as much tonight is, in addition to all the traction that we had during 2020, we were able to leverage every dollar that came to us from the localities into dollars that we could receive from Virginia's tourist, VTC, Virginia Tourist Corporation. We got over $66,000 in grants during 2020. Almost all of those were a one-for-one match. So as we put money into our advertising and marketing campaigns, we would get grants back from VTC in support. And so, we've been very fortunate. We have an excellent partnership now with Virginia Tourism, and we're on track again for 2021, for about another $60,000. So, when they open up the coffers and say, "We have something to offer", we like to be there raising our hand, saying, "We would like, you know, we'd like a piece of that effort." We're also on board with all of our community partners. And by that, I mean that we now have Irvington and Whitestone on board with us. So every incorporated town in the River Realm, in both counties, is now a financial partner to Virginia's River Realm. Thank you, Don. I know that was for me, wasn't it? Thank you.
Let there be light.
Yes. If I just had the little spotlight over my head, that would be great. So that's exciting. And that's really through continuing to tell the story about what we can do for our businesses in our community. We were fortunate in that, in Irvington, they have a new business organization. They received a grant this past spring, and they want to use Virginia's River Realm as the platform by which to send their consumers. So they're out there spending money on social media. When it's time for those consumers to have a place to land and a place to click through, they're coming to Virginia's River Realm, so that we're not duplicating efforts here in the region. And so I think that's a win-win on many fronts, too. Because once someone comes into the Virginia's River Realm website, they can go surfing around and seeing what's going on. And they may want to come to any of our eight great small towns. What we're doing moving forward, we spent a lot of energy during COVID talking about outdoors and family getaways. And we talked about small towns where people feel safer, both physically safer and perhaps COVID-wise safer. So, we upgraded and updated each of our small towns with its own little mini-page inside. So if you go to our About page, you can now find five great things to do in every, each one of our eight great small towns that we mentioned. And it's all designed to be eye candy with great pictures and to say, "Here's some cool stuff to do, from Lively to Delta Ville, we've got a lot of extra stuff to offer." So, we spent a little bit more time really talking about our eight great small towns. We talked, we spent a lot of energy around where in the world are we? Because we thought that's important to always tell that geographical story. We now have graphics that show a little car driving down from DC. And we say that's about three hours, and it's about an hour from Richmond, and two hours from Hampton Roads. So, again, trying to get people oriented geographically as to where we are and how we can help them. So, that's really what we will continue to do moving forward. Again, this year is about talking about the small towns. We'll still continue to spend the vast majority of our marketing dollars on social media. Again, we can reach people much faster that way. So, I'm asking this year for $25,000, or what we've asked for from the beginning, no change to that. And I appreciate all that you guys have helped us do. If you have questions, I'll be happy to entertain them. Yes, Mr. Larson?
We also support the PDC, as you know, in their tourism effort.
Yes.
Do you find that you complement each other, or do you find that there's redundancies?
And I will tell you that we in Kilmarneck, for Kilmarneck Dollars, also support the PDC. I think we complement each other, because if the PDC can talk about the Northern Neck in general and create that kind of big funnel, when it funnels down to the details of what we can talk about at the individual business level here in Lancaster County, we're able to do that. And we do that across the board. PDC is a pay-to-play scenario. So if you, as a business, want to do things with the PDC through Northern Neck Tourism, particularly on their marketing side, that's all pay-to-play. Ours is our collective work being leveraged for every business that's in the hospitality and tourism segment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Any further questions, Ms. Cockrell? Thank you, ma'am.
If not, thank you. I appreciate the wave.
All right. Mr. Brown, Donald Brown, Refuge Disposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This year, the Solid Waste and Recycling Department is requesting an increase in the Maintenance and Service Contract Line Item for the contractual services provided...
Can I ask, can I ask you if you don't mind, really?
Pull the mask down.
Yeah, we fully understand you.
Thank you. This year, the Solid Waste and Recycling Department is requesting an increase in the Maintenance and Service Contracts Line Item for the contractual services provided by Waste Management. This proposed increase would increase the current approved amount of $565,460 by 15% to $650,279. The factor for this increase is due to more volume. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, we have seen a daily increase in municipal solid waste entering the facilities. The daily volume has become so great, especially for the Kilmarneck Center, that we actually fill all available containers on a daily basis, with the weekends being worst. In closing, I will add that the only other changes to this department's budget is the removal of the Line Item 60001 for office supplies, which is never used. I never used that line item. Any questions?
Gentlemen, you have any questions for Mr. Brown?
I have one question. Since we can attribute most of this increase to COVID, can't we charge it to COVID funds?
We have been applying the extra above the budgeted amount with CARES Act funds. And, I mean, we can continue to do that. I mean, when the CARES Act first came out last year, it said that, you know, you couldn't use it for any budgeted expenses, but you could use it for expenses beyond budgeted items. Now, if we budget additional money now, beginning July 1, I see where you're going with this. Should we stay low and then put the extra to CARES?
Just, I mean, because we're gonna be getting more COVID-related funds. And maybe next fiscal year, doesn't it, we can see a trend that it's just gone up in general?
Well, that's...
And we could then fund it. But if we're below budget and it comes in more, I mean, it's gonna come out of the same pot of money. If we have COVID funds later, we could apply that to it and...
Right.
Maintain it at current levels.
I think that's an option. It depends on what items you have in mind for the additional CARES money that's coming this year. I know broadband has been thrown out as a possible use of some of that money. So, I mean, it's an option, yes.
One half dozen of them.
Yeah.
The only thing I was wondering, are we in that normal period for his trash collection? Have we reached that?
That just normal increase?
Yeah, just, this is normal. I mean, you know, I went down yesterday, and I just couldn't believe it. I said, "It's Tuesday, and I know that people have picked the stuff up and..."
Right now, it's above normal.
Yeah.
Very above normal.
And it has been.
Has been.
I wonder if that's our new normal, though. That's what I'm getting at.
Well, it seems to be fitting that trend.
Mm-hmm. That's, no further comments?
Any additional comments?
Thank you for keeping up with the volume during the...
It's a very hard process, trust me.
Keeping the facilities in the shape.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right. And we have Mrs. Linda Hodges. How you doing, Mrs. Hodges?
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you for the invitation. I appreciate it greatly. Thank you to the board, and thank you, Mr. Gill, for communicating with me. I'm trying to get my information about Lancaster. Probably in previous years, I'm not sure how long you've been on the board, you've seen Chuck Walsh in this position. As my letter stated, Mr. Walsh retired the end of October. I began on November 1st. And I need to just say, he's a hard act to follow. Again, I want to talk a little bit about our agency. But let me start out with probably what you're most concerned about is the funding request. We are requesting only level funding, and that is $373 per capita. The board, when they met in October, decided that they were not gonna increase the request in great part to the understanding that localities, these small communities, have been stressed and stretched by COVID. And so, we made a conscious decision to not increase our request for this next fiscal year. I'm not sure who has received the packets that I sent to Mr. Gill. I just want to highlight a few things...
They've all got it.
They all, okay, great. A few things, you can read it yourself, obviously, so I just want to bring attention to a few things. The first one is that your funds help assist those individuals, what I call the sliding fee scale, people who do not have insurance. And it helps to underwrite the services to them. And so it was called subsidized care, or else self-pay individuals. And for Lancaster, it's 28% of the individuals we serve were through subsidized care. They did not have insurance to pay for services. We know with the Medicaid expansion that that has certainly helped in a great way for individuals who, for us to serve, and who now have insurance. But they're still up 28%. And that was the same way in fiscal year 2019. So that has not changed at all. I also want to point out that the wage impact on Lancaster County, meaning the number of individuals we employ that reside in Lancaster County, was a little less than $1 million, $956,302 for last fiscal year. So that certainly has an impact, bringing some of the monies back here to this community. Most of, our services increased a bit, as far as fiscal year 20 to the previous year. I believe a little over 100 people. And I was trying to look over the numbers. Nothing struck out and took my attention. Emergency services stayed about the same. Children's case management increased a significant amount. So, otherwise, things pretty much stayed on even keel. There was not a significant change. But one of our largest efforts this past few years has been a development of our counseling center. We moved from Warsaw to Tappahannock. We renamed it Essex Counseling Center. That has been a project, a major undertaking that we've been working on for four to five years. So our counseling center is there, and also our Charter House program, which was previously in Kilmarneck and housed there for well over 20 years, that relocated to downtown in Tappahannock as well. Unfortunately, when you serve 10 counties, you try to figure out where's the best place in these 10 counties with rivers running through them, the best place, most central place to offer services. And that's about in the middle of the Rappahannock River. So, as you're well aware, we're challenged by, how can we serve our folks the best? Where could they have access to? But this opportunity came up when they purchased the property in Tappahannock. And so we went ahead and purchased that, and revisited, repurposed two buildings to serve those two programs. So with that, I'm just gonna turn over to you to see if you have any more, any questions for me.
You thinking about re-establishing a ferry to bring the people to you?
I actually hadn't thought about that. I appreciate that thought, but no, that hasn't crossed my mind. Maybe someone with the CARES Act money, I wonder if we can use that to purchase that.
What's, what's going on with the Charter House thing coming out? I see they're working on it.
I noticed that myself. They hadn't worked on it for, we had our fire December 31 of 99. And they hadn't worked on it until I just drove by and saw that they're working on it. So I don't know what Mr. Walker's gonna be using, using the property for. I see he did decide not to keep the back on it. It looks like it might be a home or something, but I don't, I don't have any inside information.
What was the amount paid to your employees who live in Lancaster?
Um, hold on, it was...
It's probably in your documentation.
It is $956,302, $956,302.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate the opportunity.
Ms. Allen, YMCA?
Hi, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the Northern Neck Family YMCA. I think in the past 15 years, you've had Mark Favazza come and speak with you every year. I'm the new executive director. He's moved on to a regional position. So I'm just here to ask you for the level funding for our contract for service dollars for this coming year. We use those dollars to provide programs for youth and adults in the community, sports, aquatics, and health and wellness. Even in this trying year with COVID, we've continued to offer clean, safe, and healthy options to the local residents of Lancaster County. We currently have over 2,300 residents that are members of the YMCA. We're particularly proud that last year, we were able to collaborate with the school system, with our Bright Beginnings Program. And we were able to provide every child that attends Lancaster County School, 1,122, with the virtual school supplies for them to have at home, to be able to do their work. We still provide scholarship dollars to individuals that can't afford to pay the membership pricing. So we gave out $136,000 last year. We are serving currently, last year, we served 230 individual, not duplicated, children. Right now, we're employing 62 residents of Lancaster County. And I will highlight just a few of our programs. I know I have a lot on the sheet that I included in the packet, but there's quite a few that I'm really proud of. We have 42 unique wellness classes every week. And we have an additional 12 that are just water aerobics. We're really proud of our indoor aquatic center that we were able to open the year before. We serve teens, family, young children, older adults. And we've done a lot of collaborations as well with the Health System, Bonsacores, and RGH. In closing, again, we appreciate your support over the past 20 years. We are happy you've chosen the YMCA to offer your Parks and Recs programs. And I will entertain any questions you'd like to ask of me.
Have you seen increased participation lately, last few months?
Yes, we have. We've seen much, much higher foot traffic. We actually are starting spring soccer outside beginning of April. And we have registrations coming in for that every day. And we're doing toddlers, so two and a half to 12-year-olds, different age groups. So yes, we're starting to see seniors come back out as well. They're feeling much more comfortable now that they've received their vaccines. And so, yes, they're coming back.
Any questions, additional questions from the board? Yes, sir.
I appreciate the fact that you're asking for level funding. I just have a disconnect between the fact that, I understand you're theoretically taking care of our Parks and Recreation Park, that that's the contract. But you also charge almost everyone. You have scholarships for those who can't afford it. I assume that means they don't pay anything, or it's a reduced fee. But everyone that takes part, the average person that takes part in your programs, pays a membership, or pays for that program, is that correct?
No, not all of our programs. We have Safety Round Water, and we've also been doing second-grade Learn to Swim lessons in collaboration with the school system, where every second grader, previous to last year, is bused to the Y. There's no fee whatsoever to the school system or any of those children. And this summer, we're actually working together with the Boys and Girls Club to offer all of their children and all of our local youth, what we're calling Safety Round Water Lessons, at no charge to them.
So the $5,000 from us would offset that?
The $50,000, yes. So we, it's not actually for facilities, but I itemized chemicals, staffing, to teach those sports programs, including water, yes. Yes, sir.
Sure I can't talk you into five? Sounded good, roll off my tongue.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Mrs. Cooper, Alice Cooper, Community Labber?
I'm not sure if she's outside or not. You all are surprisingly a little hesitant.
Yeah, running pretty good here.
Well, yeah, and he had said 10 minutes, and we've said five.
She's actually, I see, at 5:40.
Yeah, and it's 5:20 now, so...
You see her? I hear somebody, though.
They're going out.
But again, your schedule allowed 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And we're allowing five.
You're saying five minutes to speak, five minutes to discuss?
Yeah, five minutes to speak and five minutes for questions.
Okay.
That's where I came up with the 10.
Okay.
Well, while we're waiting, do you all want to make some decisions? I know we talked about maybe looking at the Refuge Disposal again. But River Realm, do y'all want to make some decisions now on some of these? So that we can put some of these to bed?
Well, we could.
Put to bed? I said, "Do you all want to make some decisions on some of these ones that we just heard about? Like River Realm is requesting 25, and you all want to make a decision on that?" So, that's done, and put some of these to bed as we move forward? I mean, that's...
I think it would be a good sense, we go ahead and act on what we know to act on right now, can agree upon, acted upon. That decreases our amount of time for this.
Sure.
Okay.
I certainly agree. And I think River Realm is the first one that is a no-brainer to me with what they have done.
That's page 45, yeah, River Realm. She's asking for no increase, right?
Same thing, 25.
Same thing, yeah. All right, so...
These requests are not my points of pain.
Well, well, then, all those in favor, that's the words I'm looking for.
Yeah, funding the River Realm at the requested amount of 25.
Yeah, all those in favor of that, raise your hands, say aye.
All right, okay.
So, okay, we got that one taken care of. All right. And then Donald Brown, that's on page 35. That's the Refuge Disposal, page 35.
We don't, we don't have a choice.
Well, yeah, we don't really have a choice. I mean, Jason brought up a good point about possibly, you know, budgeting low. But I'm just wondering if something would be said that, you know, you all were at this level in FY '20, but yet you budgeted here, I mean, you were at this level for FY '21, and you budgeted here for FY '22, when you should have budgeted here. So...
So the number you were talking here, is this the actual number that we spent?
The actual number was that $639,000 for FY '20.
Okay.
Yeah, $639,340. So, his requested amount of $650 is, you know, pretty close to FY '20 actual.
But in actuality, if we budget for what he wants, and we can use the CARES money, that's to our benefit.
That's true.
There's no downside to budgeting for what he wants.
That's very true.
Okay.
Very true.
All right, then, all in favor of appropriating what he wants, what he's requesting, say aye. Raise your hand, okay? Aye, all right, so that's 84, 88, 485, okay?
Well, that's the change. The requested amount is 1,203, 869.
All right. All right. And the next one is on page 37. That's the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Community Service Board.
And that's level funded. And I told you previously that they provide services when the Children's Services Act, you know, they are typically, the CSA typically costs a whole lot more than the services provided by the CSB.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, as I've said, that's one reason why I attend these Community Policy Management Team meetings, so that services that can be provided by the CSB has done so, because it's at a much more favorable rate to the county. It only, it only costs the county 22%, as opposed to 44% for CSA services. So, and it's level funded.
And I liked what you said about almost $1 million going to their employees who are Lancaster residents.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
And what you just mentioned, too, is significant. It's significant.
So, all of us in favor of...
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
All of those in favor of appropriating what's been requested level funding? Aye.
If I may, I would not use the word appropriate, because we're not...
You're right, you're right.
Not at that point. We're simply, all of us in agreement with the amount.
Yeah, because appropriation comes after...
Don't need to have...
Just approving these amounts.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're approving budgeting that much money, right?
Right, correct.
So, we all in favor of that, correct? The unanimous, okay? And so that takes care. The next one is the YMCA, page 41.
And again, that's level funded, $50,000. And there was a contract back from early 2000s between the county and the Y. They do provide services that would typically be provided in a Parks and Recreation Department. Yes, they do charge for some services, but they do have scholarships available for others. So, level funded at 50.
I might add something to that, just to refresh everybody's memory on that. The $50,000 was set, because that was the budget of Parks and Rec at that time. $50,000 was the Parks and Rec budget at that time. So that's how the $50,000 came about. That's how that mattered. And it stayed $50,000 from that time up till now. And even when we had Parks and Rec, there were still fees charged for kids to participate. So it wasn't free then. But I want to make sure that $50,000 that had came about, because that was the budget at that time when the Y came in, and they just left it like that. Been the same ever since.
Here's one concern when we start with the YMCA and start talking about it now, Mr. Chairman. And that is that, if I recall correctly, we have talked about, in order to address all of our needs, and some of these things that are coming up, like the roof, that's $161,000, and without having to raise taxes, that we might consider a 10% cross-the-board reduction. It encourages these folks like the YMCA that can draw a lot of their funding from, you know, the private sector, to encourage them to do more of it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but it was something that came up. And as we start approving this one here, then I think, you know, that kind of throws any consideration of that out the window. And so that's my only concern about signing off on this one right now.
If I may, I wrote an email a year ago, two years ago, suggesting that we alert the non-government organizations that we would cut their budgeted request by 10% for five years. Give them enough advance notice that they can plan on the fundraising that would make up the difference. It concerns me also that we have organizations that started on their own, and at some point in time, they came to the government, came to us, this body at least, and requested money, and it's been that way ever since. And I think it would be a better use of our, let me start over. We're supposed to be good stewards of the public's money. And when we decide who we're going to give public money to, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for us to do that. The individuals can decide who they're gonna give their money to. The organizations can have fundraising to raise those funds. So for us to say that we're going to be good stewards of the public's money and then give some of that money to certain organizations and do that year after year with no sign of ever not needing our money, I just, I don't think it's the right thing to do. So I wrote that email a year or two ago, Mr. Larson and I have talked about that, uh, and I'm glad he brought it up tonight. I think it's worth our serious consideration of what we are supposed to be doing to be good stewards, uh, how we're supposed to do that when we pick and choose the winners and losers. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
I would just like to say that, um, I think we are being good stewards of the taxpayers' money when we do sort of these, what I call, private-public partnerships. Most of these things would be public services that would be required by or provided by a government alone in a lot, in a lot of bigger localities. But because we're a small locality, we have to sort of find ways to provide these things, uh, effect, efficiently and, and financially feasible. So I think if we had to have our own Parks and Rec and fund that department, we'd be looking at way more than fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, probably be two hundred and fifty, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar department. And so I think, uh, doing it this way is probably a better, uh, way to spend the taxpayers' money in a small.
But then the question is, would we be required by the state to have Parks and Recreation?
Okay, I'm, this is what I'm going to do is, uh, then instead of, instead of voting on this amount for a budget or whatever, uh, as you suggested, leaving that behind until we get them all together and then discuss them, everybody on the same page with that?
Table, table this one, yes, sir, especially since Ms. Cooper's now here.
Okay, yeah.
She's here.
Alright, okay, okay, uh, so let me get back on track. You have five, you just came in, we have five minutes to speak, and, uh, what I'm going to do at, when you have a minute left, I'm going to just raise up the sign. Okay, so then after your minute is stopped, after the minute's over with, you stop and, uh, and if we have any questions, we ask you questions and you can comment to us and explain things to us. Alright, so at this time, we're going to ask, uh, Mrs. Alice Cooper, Community Librarian, to come forward.
Thank the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors for the allocation of one hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. For fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we are making a level funding request. And also, uh, here representing the library is our board president, Mr. William Smith. Your support of our library has provided services to the community, including virtual children's programs, including baby gardens, storytimes, and craft activities, service for patrons to pick up library materials, including books, audiobooks, magazines, and DVDs, and numerous free online services, including ebooks, e-audios, movies, and television shows. Here are some of our accomplishments in twenty twenty. Ten thousand eight hundred seventeen people have library cards. In twenty twenty, seventy-three thousand one hundred fifty items were checked out. There are forty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-seven items in the library's collection. There were ten thousand nine hundred and seventy digital downloads. There were three hundred and seven children's programs. And there were eight thousand eight hundred seventy-eight live and remote attendance, uh, of children's programs. And in lieu of in-person, uh, children's activities, two thousand six hundred and twenty-six children's kits were handed out. Twenty twenty-one marks sixty years of community service for our library, and here are some twenty twenty-one activities and also plans for the future. We are transitioning our beloved nineteen ninety-one era story mobile service to a more comprehensive mobile library service to include a new vehicle, continuation of those children's programs, delivery and loan of library books and materials, and free wifi. Uh, twenty years of our book sale income has been dedicated to this project. This year, we are working close, more closely than ever with the VIDA Volunteer Tax Preparation Service so that, um, our citizens can have contactless tax preparation uh, from February and probably through May this year. We added new programs for adults, including a summer reading program and the Changemakers Book Group. We added a new service for our library patrons called Hoopla. It's a digital media service that allows on-demand, no-waiting-time borrowing of movies, music, audiobooks, ebooks, comics, and TV that you can enjoy on your computer, tablet, phone, or TV. And this summer of twenty twenty-one, our, uh, summer programming will have the theme Color Your World, and that will be the basis for programming for all ages. We thank you for this opportunity to share the activities of the Lancaster Community Library. Do you have any questions or comments?
Board members, you have any questions? Okay, sir, go ahead.
Help me with my memory, which is fading fast, but a year or two ago, when you came before us, or when the library came before us, uh, there was a question that the state library had a, a ratio in mind of your endowment to, I believe, government, uh, contributions. Is that correct, or am I close enough on that? We did, you asked for an additional sum of money above what had been, uh, given the year before. And we said that, I believe we said, that, uh, this would be a one-time thing, that we wanted you to grow your endowment. The year after that, we asked the question of the person who came before us, whether that endowment had been grown, and the answer was no. Or not significantly. So when you say level funding, you are asking for that additional funding that we added on as a one-time thing, is, is my memory.
Yeah, come on, come on, it was.
It was two years ago, and, um, at that time, the request was in response to a minimum funding requirement, uh, for localities for their public library. And you're correct that the endowment was included in that mix, and so it was a combination of a request for the county to increase that fa, funding, and also for us to, uh, draw more on our endowment. Yeah, that's correct. So, just so you know, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, now those increases to our library do result in, in addition of state aid, but it takes two years for it to kick into the state aid formula. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, thanks to that ten thousand dollar increase and as, as well as some additional funding for state aid to public libraries, our library is also going to have an increase of six thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars in state aid.
So you're saying that if we were to try to revert back, that you would lose that state aid?
The state aid would, yes.
Diminish, not lose it, but diminish.
That's the great advantage, and that's sort of the carrot for, um, localities. One of the, um, great things about, uh, the state aid formula is it does, uh, reward localities that fund their libraries. They also increase state aid.
But two years ago, you got my support because I wasn't in favor really increasing it, but you got my support. I won't use the word promise, but to me, it was a promise that you will go work with your endowment to raise that to where we wouldn't have to do that again.
Our endowment has increased, uh, it really has. I mean, I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but if that's what you need, we can send it to you. We are increasing the draw on our endowment. Um, I, as I say, I don't have all those numbers in front of me. But we are, we're drawing more from the endowment than we're receiving in, uh, funding from the county at this point. A lot more.
Yes, sir. Clint, as a follow-on too, uh, when we talked last year, uh, and even before the year before, one of the concerns I had was that, again, the, the town of, uh, Kilmarnock itself as a locality was not contributing to the library at all. And yet they benefited greatly from it. People coming into the library stands to reason they would shop there, it would, it would add, you know, add to their revenue, so to speak, but yet they were not contributing in any way, shape, or form, whereas White Stone, Irvington were, and then we were contributing this amount. And whatever you did, you managed to get them to at least commit at the beginning of last year for fifteen thousand. But as soon as they started quote-unquote addressing their COVID issues, boom, they took it away. Am I correct in that? That you never got any funding last year from Kilmarnock?
Uh, we received, uh, in the previous fiscal year, uh, five thousand dollars, but then, do, you're right, due to the, uh, crisis here, uh, that was not renewed.
But again, don't you think that they should be doing a little bit more themselves, and that could make up this difference, you know?
Well, absolutely.
It troubles me greatly to see them.
Everybody should fund the library more than they do. I absolutely believe in that. I absolutely agree. I will not argue with you.
Because, because I feel like if I and the other board members have to reach into the taxpayer's pocket to fund these kind of things, then we ought to have some of the other loc, elected officials to be doing the same thing.
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll reach out to Kilmarnock.
That, that to me will be a consideration, and I thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you.
Thank you all.
Mrs. Nelson, Free Health Clinic. How you doing this afternoon?
I'm doing pretty well, thank you.
Good. If you'd like to remove your mask, you may.
Thank you, I'd like that. Um, thank you for this opportunity. I am here with, um, some board members, um, Greg, Dr. Lockhart, Brooke Graham, Bill Arnold just left, Mary Kate Roderick, Bill Arnold right up here, and Paige Henley. So everybody's here, and John Wilson, who also works at the clinic. So I understand the five minutes that wait, um, so, oh, crunchy duck.
I'll pause it for you.
I go to page three. You know, I, um, every year we come to the, um, to the counties and ask for what we've done for twenty-eight years. I've, I've supplied a spreadsheet so you can see how people have moved forward with what they have. Um, you know, I also supplied a, um, a spreadsheet of showing how every spoke of the wheel of fundraising is applied. And, um, and, and we, um, work very hard at all the spokes of the wheel, and the county certainly has been a very important piece of it. We've gone, the, from the get-go, from twenty-eight years ago, um, we went to twenty-five percent of our budget and went to the counties according to the patient population we served. I, on the second page, I moved all the information up to the front, is also the expenditures and the source of funds and where the monies have gone and where they've come from. I've included the budget, uh, detailed on our budget as well, and, um, I would also, at this time, um, tell you, it's been a very unique year. Um, we are done with a lot of volunteers. We have a hundred and ninety-eight volunteers, and when COVID came, those volunteers were, um, we were advising them not to come in during this time. And it has been, um, since to date, we have seven volunteers coming into the clinic to actually continue. It, um, allowed us, unfortunately, during that time, and it created weekend work for all the staff in order to do what the volunteers had been helping to keep the clinic moving forward. And so we incurred, um, nine hundred hours of overtime to keep the operation moving on a weekly basis. So it wasn't open on Saturdays and Sundays, but all the paperwork and all the different details were done during that timeframe. So it's been, uh, every, every of the programs changed, um, in the fact that, you know, we continued, we never closed down a day. We had, our pharmacy went to, instead of thirty-day prescriptions, we made the commitment of going to a ninety-day prescription for our patients and having it delivered to the cars, which, um, was an important part to reduce the, um, groups and the number of people that come through the clinic. We also were in a situation on March eleventh, um, with our staff dentists, the, um, VCU dental students were put on hold and they have not come back yet. So, um, during that timeframe, we were backed up when the ADA really closed down dentistry from March until, um, July. When we finally found a dentist to come and do some of the work, um, we were backed up about seven hundred pa, um, patient visits. So it's been a very, um, major year and a challenging year. Um, I will tell you, um, it's been a, uh, a strong commitment with people serving, uh, communities and, um, and making sure we do it in a safe environment. I'd like to also thank you, you all, during your CARES Act money, um, allocated some money to us that took care of our, part of our, um, ventilation system that we needed to do, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and I'm going to ask Greg Lockhart to step up. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Sorry, I apologize.
Janie, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that you provided, Dr. Westbrook, you know, at his request, the municipal funding history.
Yes.
And to me, that was a real eye-opener, uh, because as I look at it, and again, I, fairness is a big thing to me, you know? And first of all, I do have issues with your, uh, twenty-five percent. I don't, you know, I realize that it's been going on for twenty-six years, but we've never been provided anything in writing that that was agreed to. So I, I have a problem right there. But if I'm willing to accept it, and I am, I look down, going back to nineteen ninety-three on this thing, and I see, for example, some folks like, uh, Middlesex here, which as I understand it, you have a clinic over there, do you not?
We have a place we deliver prescriptions to, yes, sir.
But, but the bottom line here is that you requested for twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars, and they gave you fifteen thousand.
That's correct.
And the same is true for folks like, you know, uh, you know, the Westmoreland, for example. Uh, you requested twenty-six, nine thirty from them, got five thousand, uh, you know, and just going right on the line. So what it boiled down to is even though you requested in twenty twenty-one roughly the same amount as you're requesting this year, and we, we provided a hundred thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven, we provided more, and if you want to use the term donation, uh, we donated more than all of the other counties that are participating in this activity combined. And that was never my impression, and I find it troubling that, like I say, uh, while we may not be coming up to the amount that you request, the others are pikers compared to us, and it's, it's, it's very troubling. So I, yeah, bottom line, you haven't been getting the amount that you expected, this so-called twenty-five percent. You've been getting roughly around two hundred thousand at the latest count, and we've been providing over half of it. And yet, we're one of, what is it, five counties that are part of this. And so that's, that's something that drives my thinking a little bit.
No, I understand that. Um, I also would say that the facility, the state-of-the-art, and it is state-of-the-art facility that we have is located in Lancaster County, and it is an asset. It also allows, you do have the majority of the care that comes through here just because of the, and all, of the, um, availability as well. Um, you know, a lot of our patients have transportation problems, so some of that is, is a burden, and it can be even a burden within the same, in the same county. The, um, you know, the counties, this is, um, I don't, this actually, um, this is a spreadsheet I will submit every year. But, you know, the clinics all started, the state and the county used to provide this health care. And when they mandated it out to Medicaid, and we were forty-eight in our country for giving the least to our poor, it allowed free clinics to pop up because the emergency rooms were getting jammed. And because of that, that's what happened. And so, um, And so, um, over the, during that timeframe, in the early nineties, when this happened, it, we grew about forty free health clinics in the state, and it's become a very complicated way to provide health care. It's been a unique way, and I will tell you, it has been quality care that has come through. I think the county supporting the poorest people is only making our economy and the health of a community to be at the top. And to me personally, sir, I'm speaking for Jeannie Nelson, um, I feel that the county does have a part in it, and I, um, and they do get the biggest part, so.
Again, you were here, and you heard me ask the library the same thing.
Right.
So while I understand what you're saying, and while I, I know that you provided tremendous service and all of that, I think that, you know, again, as Dr. Westbrook has said, it's stewards of the taxpayer dollar, we have to look at all, in the context of all the things that are coming in, all of the additional things that are coming in on top of us, and I just do not see where it makes any sense, in my mind, anyway, or at least the way I look at it, subsidize other counties in terms of the local contribution.
If you look at that, um, the source where we come, go to individuals and grants and counties and the state, as well as community organizations, businesses, we hit every aspect of a fundraising potential. And in a small county, with all the important other options of other places, very challenging. And, um, to me personally, taxpayer money, this is a perfect place for it. So that's my personal, I understand, I hear your views, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ask her a question.
Yes.
You and I have a number of email exchanges.
We did.
And, my concern is that, every year, you know the deadline to get the supporting documentation to us, and you know what that supporting documentation should be.
Right.
This, I assume, is something that you've had for some time. I don't, haven't had a chance to look through it yet, but, the first thing that I would look at is your tax return, because that tells the story of where you really are. And you sent the two thousand eighteen tax return when you know better.
Well, I don't.
I'm not through.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I looked at your tax return for two thousand eighteen, and on the nine ninety Schedule O, supplemental information, Part Six, Section C, Line Nineteen, you say, "Tax returns, budgets, and other governing documents are available for review by donors and the general public at the clinic during scheduled office hours." That means that at your clinic right now, if this is true, you have your two thousand nineteen tax return, but you didn't send us your two thousand nineteen tax return, you sent us two thousand eighteen. And it was a lot of pages that are meaningless, as far as trying to get a handle on where you are today. You say that in here is a budget. I didn't see a bu- don't remember seeing a budget that's accurate for what we want. So to me, it's smoke and mirrors. You, you, you know, as I said, hold the phone, as I said, in an email to you, when we give public money to an organization, us trying to be good stewards of the public's money, and we give you money, that requires you to be a good steward, and you should, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, but you should look at the opportunity to tell us your story, you should, you should welcome that. Here is what we're doing, and we're proud of it. I understand about the patient visits and all of that, but what we're talking about is public money. How is the money being spent? We have no idea how the money's being spent. We have no idea, I have no idea, I can't speak for anyone else, why you've chosen one million, five hundred and forty thousand, four hundred dollars as your budget, because there's nothing that I have seen that builds, that tells us why this is. So I'm very disappointed, and even then, the last email that you sent me, which was, I believe, two days ago, said you were gonna look into the salary information. Well, you have had that, you know you've had that, but every year we go through this song and dance, and it's not right, it's not appropriate, and it's not appreciated.
First, let me start with the fir- um, second one, actually. Our CPA will be finalizing our nineteen taxes, and it will be on April fifteenth, and that is a fact. So it's at the CPA. My board can back me on that.
I don't care about that, you know what you've spent, they're gonna verify that, that's fine, but you have, you know what you've spent, and you're asking your CPA to verify that for you in an audit or whatever, but you could have presented that information to us by the deadline, could you not?
I did do it by the deadline.
You didn't give the salaries.
I did.
You didn't.
And.
I didn't see it. Am I the only one that didn't see it?
No.
Okay. I did have one, um, more question, I can't even remember what that was.
I'll remember by the time we leave here.
Hi. My name's Greg Lockhart, uh, I think I was here last year. My function is not to, uh, uh, do anything but tell you about the nuts and bolts of taking care of people.
Well, we know about that, don't we?
Well, I'm not sure you do, because, uh, there's a whole lot happening in the clinic, and I think it'd be worthwhile just hearing about it.
How much time does he have?
He's got a minute, fifteen seconds.
He's got a minute.
I think I can probably do it. Last year, all of our taxes, uh, were not due until June, because the IRS couldn't handle them. Meanwhile, what we're doing at the clinic is trying to continue to take care of the patients that we have, and in addition to protect those patients and protect ourselves, which has required pretty much a complete re-outfitting of the entire circulatory system of the clinic, it's required, uh, much more equipment for PPEs to take care of people, and when nut and bolt time came, clinic made the decision to participate with the Health Department in providing vaccines, and a vaccinating place and volunteers to provide those vaccines, of which fifty people are doing now on about a two-times-a-week basis. First one in the county, first one in the Health District, and we're gonna continue to do that until all the vaccines that are allotted to us are given, and that's just probably through the end of the summer. So while we're talking about being good stewards of the, uh, taxpayers' money, that's exactly what we're doing, is we're trying to take care of the health of, first of all, the most vulnerable people who can't afford it, and second of all, everybody collectively in the counties and in the Health District that can get to us, that can need a vaccine. So, I hope that puts it in a little bit of perspective.
It's my understanding that you can go to the state or the federal government to get PPE money to reimburse you for that, is, am I incorrect?
No, no, you're correct.
Okay, so you've got, you've got money for that, to help you with that.
It's not even. It's not even.
I'm sure it's not.
So, the, the point is, is that we need whatever help we can get, and because there is a vehicle to get some proportion of that back, doesn't mean we give up on everybody else.
Okay, okay.
Doesn't mean I give up on what, for money I give to the health clinic.
My point is, you don't give us the supporting documentation in time for us to review it to really see what's what. You wait until the last minute, you give incomplete information, and then, on the day that you do a presentation, we get a piece of paper, or we got a booklet to look at, and that you, you are in charge of and you can control.
Okay, any, any further comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, thank you. You got someone else you want to speak, or?
Well, the whole group only gets five minutes.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. Okay. All right. All right. Let's see, now we go onto a virtual, right?
Yes.
And the next one is Tony Spencer. Uh, that's page twenty-five, and.
He's not on there?
He's not on yet, 'cause it's, it's, his time is starting at six, so we got two minutes to go. All right.
You don't have him yet, but you do have Kathy Vesely and Ken Pollak.
I've got a, uh, I've got, um, a, uh, a, a, on here that's identified, only it's eighteen oh four five.
It's what?
Eighteen oh four five.
I don't know.
Only I can say is, you know, Tony up there, if you ever raise your hand.
Yeah, uh.
Do you have a microphone, Glenn? You got me last time, 'cause mine wasn't on.
Uh, well, I, I'll ask him, if, uh, if Tony Spencer can hear me, uh, whether you're on, on the phone, or coming on, on your computer, uh, if you're on your computer, raise your hand, uh, the little icon at the bottom of the screen, uh, and if you're on your phone, press star nine, so we'll, we'll know that you're available.
Okay, so who's already up there?
We got, uh, Bay Aging and Bay Transit, which is at six-ten, we could go ahead and let them go since they're on.
All right.
Kathy Vesely and Ken Pollak.
Okay, so let's go with, uh, Bay Aging, Kathie Vesely, that's page thirty-seven, Jen.
It'll take a minute or two, ju- well, a few seconds for Glenn to promote them to a presenter, so they can be seen on the screen.
Okay.
Well, good evening. I'm Kathy Vesely Massey, and I'm the president and CEO of Bay Aging, and I guess I'll start with the age-old question, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can hear you clearly. Now, you have.
Okay, thank you.
You have five minutes to speak, and at the, uh, when you have a minute left, I will raise this, letting you know you have one minute left, and then after you finish.
Okay, five minutes apiece, did you say? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Five minutes together.
Oh, well, I'll talk fast.
All right, and then, and then at the end, we will, uh, of your five minutes, we, we open it up to question and answer. Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your tremendous support of Bay Aging, and as you can imagine, the last year has been a very rough one for us. We stayed open, not only continuing, but expanding our services based on COVID-nineteens, especially drastic impact, uh, negative impact on older adults. Uh, altogether, we served three thousand, two hundred and forty-seven residents of the county, which was a twenty percent increase. The need for home-delivered meals was perhaps the greatest, um, uh, impact where so many people wanted to self-quarantine, and therefore, we really upped the number of meals being delivered, delivering over twenty thousand meals, uh, with volunteers, and, uh, some of them, of course, most, I think, were the home-delivered meals on wheels, but also we expanded into some evening meals with the Helping Neighbors program. Not only meals, folks wanted to avoid institutional care, so we have provided five thousand, six hundred and twelve hours of essential service for in-home aides to help people who were otherwise nursing home eligible. And, we were pleased that the state called on us for a new program, saying that they wanted us to, um, administer the rent and mortgage relief program in the county. We served twenty-two households and awarded their sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and some dollars, uh, to help people remain in their home. And this helped not only the twenty-one renters and one homeowner keep their homes, but also the landlord. If you look at the back page, uh, you can see that, uh, your contribution over the last year was fifteen thousand, six hundred, uh, and we used that to leverage well over two hundred thousand dollars. We are asking for a one percent increase this year, so it would be fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, uh, to help offset some of our cost of living. But as you look through our stats in the bottom of page two, where we're doing our report, you will, uh, hopefully be very pleased at the fundraising that we are doing, and the fact that we sell our services, and that income constitutes fifty-six percent of our budget, and the income that we are getting from our local governments, two percent, which we feel is fitting, as we know you two struggle, uh, to cover the many and varied cost of the county. And with that, I will turn it over to Ken Pollak to talk about Bay Transit.
Good evening. Very quickly, uh, I did want to note that Bay Transit is celebrating their twenty-fifth anniversary this year. We've had a difficult year because of COVID, as has everyone. We've had to reduce our capacity to three riders per bus on a twelve or thirteen-passenger bus due to social distancing. Over the spring, we started, uh, putting some PPEs on the buses to help us, uh, increase our capacity. We suspended fare collection, and we required all the passengers and drivers to wear masks. We provide free masks and sanitizer. We built Plexiglas shields around the driver's area and installed Plexiglas shields behind the, uh, passenger seats. Uh, we call this our Good To Go campaign, YouTube videos and, uh, uh, flyers to help people reassure them that it's safe to ride Bay Transit again. Uh, we did have a de- decrease in ridership this year, surprisingly, in Lancaster County, it was only eight percent. Our system-wide decrease was, was over twenty percent, so it's very, very good, uh, for Lancaster, that we only had an eight percent decrease considering all of the, uh, the, the virus that we were dealing with. We are requesting sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars this year for one full-time bus and one halftime bus. That is a two percent increase from our, uh, request from two years ago. Uh, last year, or this current year, I should say, um, we were able to access CARES Act money specific to transit, and we were able to waive all local match fees for all of the counties, so this year's is on us, and, uh, we'll start again next year. Any questions?
Bill, board members?
I'd just make a quick comment, I'd just like to thank you all for the expansion of the nice, uh, area of, like, pickups that y'all have been building all over the northern neck, that's been a great asset to, to Bay Transit and the people using the facilities and the rides.
Thank you.
If I have a few seconds left, um, I did in my rush not recognize, uh, two of our very important board directors from Lancaster County, and that is, um, Jimmy Carter, who is chairman of the board, doing a great job, and Vera Lee, who also serves on executive committee as our secretary, and we're very appreciative of their hard work and dedication to your county.
Do you have any references for this Lee woman?
Well, thank you all very much, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who else do you see up there?
All right, I think, uh, Mr. Spencer is online now.
All right.
Glenn is gonna bring him up.
And, that's page twenty-five.
With, with an addition, though.
Attorneys are paid by the hour and by the minute, so we'll just drop those minutes from the budget.
But page twenty-five doesn't have this latest thing.
Yeah, it does, it's bolded in the salaries.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, three-twenty, it's two-seventy, yeah. Is he on?
Yeah, Glenn's got him, it just takes a few seconds to, to do, you know, hit all the right buttons to bring him up on the screen, so, uh.
I think that's running a little slow.
Ah, there we are.
How you doing this afternoon?
Just fine, and you?
Good, good, good. All right, you have five minutes, and when you get down to one minute, I'm gonna raise this, uh, to let you know you have one minute after that, and then after your five minutes is up and you finish, we're gonna be, uh, having a question and answer session. You're, you're on, sir.
It was my goal when I took office not to ask for any, uh, budget increase, I was hoping, ever. I wanted to try and do a, a good job with what was being provided already, and it was, um, I think I could have done that, except, uh, we, I became aware that, um, the sheriff's office has body cams, uh, body cameras, and there's a ruling from Virginia State Bar that says that any prosecutor who's prosecuting a case where there's body cams, uh, body cam footage, has a, an ethical duty to review the, the footage. And, that takes a lot of time. And, the General Assembly, I believe, uh, and this would be something maybe your, uh, county attorney can look into, 'cause it's a little outside what I do, um, my understanding was, the General Assembly said to the localities, "Look, you don't have to have body cams if you don't want to." Um, there are a lot of good reasons to have them, it's, I think they're a great thing to have, um, you know, it helps to identify civil rights violations, it helps to, uh, limit liability, it also helps get convictions, if you can have, uh, video footage of, of the crime being committed, uh, obviously that would help in, in court. But, the, the General Assembly said, "You don't have to have them."
But the General Assembly said, "You don't have to have them." But if you decide to have them, an ancillary cost that you're going to have to incur is that the locality is going to have to pay for an additional prosecutor just because of the amount of time it takes to view the footage. And my understanding of what the General Assembly said is that for, locality has anywhere from one to seventy cameras, you need to come up at the local level with funding for a full-time prosecutor at the comp board pay grade. However, the legislation also, my understanding is that it says, however, if the Commonwealth attorney agrees, you can come up with a formula other than what the comp board uses. I'm certainly agreeable with coming up with something that's less than what the comp board would pay. I really don't know how much this is gonna cost us. As soon as I found out about this, I asked the sheriff's office to stop using their body cams, because I don't want to be committing ethical violations and for obvious reasons. So they stopped using them, and they're very anxious to start using. We've had two incidents recently where it would, it would have been helpful to have body cam footage, because there are allegations of misconduct by the police that I'm sure are not true, but if we had the video footage, it would, it would make it clear. So it has already created an issue that we're not using it. And I've got someone who is prepared to start viewing this body cam footage on a part-time basis, on an hourly basis. He is an attorney in private practice who has to wrap up, I think, one last case before he can do this. And we're hoping to start maybe next week, it's early this next week. It may be that he's spending ten hours a week doing this. It may be that he's spending thirty hours a week doing this. I don't know yet. So I think we'll have a better idea in a, in a month or two of how much time actually is required here. But we are gonna need some additional funding for that, and how much, I'm not sure. So that's all I had to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If, if I can just clarify just one thing for the board's benefit. Mr. Spencer had some unspent part-time money in his budget, so that's what he's gonna use for this part-time attorney for the rest of this fiscal year to try to compile some data on, you know, how much he's actually being used. And so that will help Mr. Spencer arrive at, you know, a good estimate for FY22. So the county attorney has looked into this, Tony, and, and, you know, I, I think he's like-minded with you, and the caveat is that, you know, if, if the Commonwealth's attorney is, you, you can negotiate this with what the, with what the Commonwealth attorney is comfortable with, with providing. So, so that's how he's gonna fund this part-time attorney for the rest of this fiscal year with part-time money that he had unspent in his budget.
Let me, let me just say something about that part-time money, though. You know, when COVID came, that part-time money had been paying someone to be a part-time secretary in the office. And I understand why that was necessary under the prior Commonwealth attorney, is that they, he wanted everything digital. And I'm much more of an analog-type person. I like having a paper file. But the, the part-time secretary's job mainly was scanning things, and we don't do that anymore. So I didn't need that part-time secretary position. What I did need was a part-time investigator. And just to give you some example of what I'm talking about, we have been listening to hundreds of hours, you know, the, the phone calls from the jail are recorded. And there's a warning at the beginning saying, "Your phone call is being recorded, subject to monitoring." And we have found a lot of really useful information out of the, listening to these jailhouse calls, but it takes a lot of time. And I've had an investigator who's done some other things for me, too. Keith Hogg does some part-time work for me, and I was using that part-time money for him. I really need that. There are times when I may want someone to go do surveillance, to try and find a witness, and the sheriff's office just doesn't have the manpower to do it. Or it may be that we had a case where I needed someone to spend, you know, the hours of going up and down the side of a highway with a metal detector looking for shell cases from a shooting case. It got so bad with listening to jailhouse phone calls that my wife, who has been very helpful to me in my first, my first fifteen months in office, has listened to jailhouse phone calls for me to, to try and find information that we needed to go, take to court. What I would hate to see happen is that, that the board decides, "Well, you've got that part-time money, so you don't need any extra money for this prosecutor to, to view dash, body cam footage." I need that part-time money for an investigator. And, you know, one other thing, I, it's, perhaps it's just historical, the situation we find ourselves in, but I am prosecuting people who should have been sent to the penitentiary by previous administrations. So we have our plate very full. The jail is busting at the seams. We have so many people there who should have been incarcerated years ago. In fact, we're housing people at Saluda, Rappahannock Regional Jail, other places, because we don't have enough room for all the people that, that, that are locked up right now. And then I'm, I'm not a lock-'em-up guy unless it's violent crime, and that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with shootings. There've been a lot of shootings. Fortunately, no one's been killed, but there've been a lot of shootings in Lancaster in the last fifteen months. I mean, almost, I'd say on average, at least once a month, which is ridiculously high for, for jurisdiction size. So what I'm hoping is that that part-time money that Mr. Gill was just referring to, that I'm gonna be using to help fund the body cam review prosecutor, attorney. And it has to be an attorney that does it. That I will still have some money to be able to hire someone to do, on a part-time basis, some investigation from the office. That's all I have.
So what you're really asking us is not to consider that part-time money for, for this position?
Yes, I am, I am asking you that, yes. Thank you. You said it so much more succinctly than I did.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes.
I want to make sure I'm straight now. We, we see funding of fifty-six thousand dollars. That's, that's the request.
Yeah, the full-time position is fifty-six, six and change.
But I'm also hearing Mr. Spencer saying, "We really don't know what it's gonna be until, I guess, they use this person for a low haul, right?" So it might not be fifty-six, right?
That's right. No, I, it's not gonna be fifty-six. Fifty-six is, is what the General Assembly said the locality is required to provide, unless the Commonwealth attorney agrees to something else. So I went ahead and put that number down, but I'm, I'm fully, and I've talked to Mr. Gill about this. I'm fully prepared to negotiate something considerably less than that, much less than that. Because that's for up to seventy cameras, and I think we only have twenty, twenty-five cameras. So we're gonna need something probably at least half that number. Plus, if they're part-time, you're not gonna have to provide benefits, et cetera, that you would for a full-time person. So, yeah, I'm prepared to negotiate to something much, much less than that, but I put that in my request.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause the, the information we got, it says fifty-six thousand with benefits.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I think this is kind of a worst-case scenario from a budget standpoint, yes.
And again, this would be, this would be like the school system. If they don't use the money, it stays in the general fund, I assume.
That's correct.
In fact, I think we, we came in under budget last, last fiscal year.
You did.
I think we saved, I think we came in on something like ten, ten thousand dollars under budget, maybe? Last, last, last fiscal year? I'm not about trying to get a lot of money to do the job, but, but there are some things we have to, we have to fund. And the, the Virginia State Bar says we have to, and the General Assembly says we have to fund a, an attorney to review body cam footage. To, for civil rights violations, to make sure there's no exculpatory evidence that should be provided to the defendant. And then for me, I'd be happy to, if it helps me prove cases, too.
Mr. Jason?
Attorney, I have a quick question. Thank you for one, for doing a great job over there in the office. It's prosecutions up in crime seems to be, hopefully, improving here in Lancaster County under your leadership over there. One question I have, of course, you prosecute a lot more cases, and, and so fines and things are, are levied against those people, and some of that money comes back into Lancaster County, correct?
If it's charged under county ordinance, yes, it comes back to the county.
Do you have any metrics or data of how much you've increased that number coming back over your, over your tenure or basis process?
I don't have, I have no, no information on that. One thing that I've been talking with judges about is, once COVID is, I mean, our court, our court system's been, just like everybody, we've been, the impact has been tremendous on us. But I've been talking with the judges about what we plan to do when courts open back up to how they used to be, to start collecting unpaid fines and unpaid costs. There's things that we, that we've talked about, where we're gonna send out show-cost summons to maybe a hundred people at a time and have them all come in the courtroom at one time, and have the judge say, you know, "You, you could possibly go to jail for not paying your fines and costs, but if you want to make arrangements with the Commonwealth attorney's office right now, please see Mr. Spencer," and, and just kind of do a huge collection effort to bring money to the county. But to answer your question, I have no metrics on any of that.
Does the county keep any kind of metrics on fines and money that we get back for, for that particular sum of?
We have actuals for those line items. I, I mean, I'd have to do a little bit of research.
It would just be interesting to see, like, from year to year, like, how that's progressed, or how much money the county's received from fines, not only from a prosecution standpoint, but maybe it gives a metric on where crime stands in the community.
We can, we can, we can research that.
Let me just say this about where, about that. The places where the county is gonna see money coming in is not gonna be things my office prosecutes, really, because it's mainly gonna come from traffic infractions. They're charged under the county ordinance, and we don't really get involved in prosecuting traffic infractions, because there's no jail involved, and, and the, the officers are capable of handling that with the judge by themselves. Like most jurisdictions, we don't do those cases. I think the metric you're looking for on crime rate is, the Virginia State Police issues a, a report every year on, on crime rates. And I expect what you may see is the crime rate is, actually went up last year, and it may even be a little bit high this year, but I'm, my guess is in year three of my being in office, you're gonna see a, a drastic plunge in the crime, crime rate. Because there, I, I'm not gonna name names, but there are people who have been committing crimes over and over and over again since 2010, who, when I took office, were walking the streets, who are not anymore. And as a result, you know, you're gonna stop, see, you're gonna start seeing that crime rate drop, I think precipitously in, in year three.
So, so is your advice for us to budget the amount that the comp board says, and then our expectation would be that you would not spend all of that? Is that correct?
My thinking was that we're gonna compromise now.
Yes. I'm ready to compromise now, but what I'd like, when do we need to make a decision on this? Because I'd like some data to try and, you know, once, this, we're supposed to start, I think, next week with reviewing the body cam footage, and I'm saying, I'm thinking probably by sometime in late April, we'll know. We'll have some idea of how, how much is needed.
Well, the-
I don't know when, when you all need to make your decisions.
Well, the, the budget calendar that the board has adopted has them approving the budget at their April 29th meeting. And I would have to advertise the budget April 15th for the public hearing on April 22nd. So I don't believe you're gonna have enough time to get-
Why can't we just level fund this and agree to pay that, whatever the cost of that particular line item is when it comes due?
Well, you can always come back and do a supplemental appropriation to the budget.
That seems to be the easiest way to do it, since we have no idea what the cost is now. We just-
Well, it, it's either that-
Pay the cost and then pay it.
It's either that or budget for the worst-case scenario, and then the actual comes in less.
The problem to me with what you just suggested is, when's he gonna come, when, when are we gonna do a supplemental? He's gotta pay these, this person.
Well, and, and, I mean, I don't want to put words in, in his mouth, but he, he's got some part-time money to help pay this attorney for the remainder of FY21, we hope.
And it could be that in May or June, he could come back.
Yeah, I mean, he could come back, you know, I was saying a supplemental appropriation to the FY22 budget, but he could also come back for a supplemental appropriation to the FY21 budget if needed.
Let me throw a number out at you. Twenty-five to thirty. How does that sound to you?
Sounds okay to me. I really have no idea. I mean, I, I, we'll, we'll, we'll make whatever happens work. You know, I just don't, I don't know. I, I really have no idea what we're dealing with here.
Well, gentlemen, I'm ready to give him twenty-five, and if he needs additional, he can come back. If not, that'll be carried over and, and, and left over, you know, in his budget. So we go back to the general funds.
Mr. Chairman, the issue for me-
That makes sense to me, and I will tell you, we're not gonna use the money just because it's there. We didn't do it last year. We, we came in under budget last year. I'd like to come in under budget every year.
Mr. Chairman, the issue for me, and I appreciate what Mr. Spencer's saying, that, that he'll take what he can get and try to make it work. But the issue for me is, when we talk about bringing on another full-time employee that's driven by the, the General Assembly telling us that he has to review camera footage, I recognize that sometimes it's beneficial to prove a case. That's the problem, because that employee's there, expects to be retained year in and year out, and will get the pay increases, again dictated by the General Assembly and the Compensation Board, yet the Compensation Board is expecting us to pay the full weight of the thing. That's the problem I have. So I can see, given additional funds as part-time employment, to help him out with his situation. But I, I will, I am firmly opposed to this idea of trying to bring on another deputy attorney.
Now, I don't think you're asking for full-time, correct?
I'm not, I'm not. I, I put it in my request as a starting point, with the full expectation, and talking with Mr. Gill, that we would be asking to, that we'd be agreeing to something considerably less.
Well, gentlemen, can we agree on a twenty-five for this position?
Just sorry?
Can we agree on twenty-five for this part-time position?
Twenty-five rather than twenty-two that's there, or twenty-five additional?
Twenty-five additional, because the twenty-two that's there, he's already justified how he's using that and he needs it.
I think what Mr. Palin is saying is, instead of the fifty-seven thousand dollar full-time position, budget twenty-five thousand additional money under the part-time line item for FY22.
If it helps, I would agree to that right now.
Okay, and, and Mr. Spencer says he would agree to that.
I think that's, that's a, that's a starting point there. I think we can talk about that. I'm not ready to commit to that tonight.
Good.
Having said that, I will say that the Commonwealth's attorney, whether it's Mr. Spencer or his predecessors, have always done a good job of staying within their budget. And they've kept, they, they kept it pretty level. And, you know, so when they come in and need additional funds, you know, I generally favorably dispose to it, but-
But if we look at the predecessors, the reason they came in under budget was because we got exactly what we paid for.
Well, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say that.
Well, I will.
Well, what's yours? Thank you.
Yeah, twenty-five.
I'll back with that.
You wanna, wanna commit now, or you wanna wait till later?
Well, I think Jack is saying he wanna wait.
Until later.
Yeah, I think he wants to wait.
Okay, all right, good. Any, any other questions? All right, any additional information from you, sir?
Nothing from me. Thank you guys so much.
Well, thank you very much. All right.
And by the way, I didn't start, like, with all the formalities, but I do appreciate everything you all do, the support you give our office, and I didn't want to say goodbye to you without letting you know how much we do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We're happy that you're here.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
All right.
Same to you.
Who's up next? I mean, you got, you got Ann, what's her name?
Yeah, but-
Legal Aid.
Klockner.
Yeah, Klockner.
Paul, Paul's here, but he's-
But Paul is here.
He's gonna be at the end. He knows that.
But he could be now.
Well, I mean, do you have anybody, Glenn?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we got a timeframe we're working with, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's bringing her online.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's page, that's page thirty-eight.
I keep looking for somebody in the audience, not thinking about, looking, they're gonna be virtual. Old habits.
There she is. Can you hear us?
Hello?
I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, so we're gonna have you to present. Your timeframe is five minutes. And when you have a minute left, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold up the sign, so you can know you have a minute left. And then after you finish, it'll be a question-and-answer session. Okay, so you can start whenever you like.
Thank you very much. My name is Ann Klockner. I'm the executive director at Legal Aid Works, and we've been serving your Lancaster County constituents since 1979. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and to be allowed to speak virtually. That's very appreciated. We're asking to be returned to our previous funding of five thousand six hundred dollars. In FY19, you decided to stop your support of our organization. We understand all too well the tough choices you need to make a balanced county- the tough choices you need to make a balanced county budget because we do the same with our budget. Our one attorney office in Tappahannock covers seven counties, including Lancaster. We represent low-income people who need an attorney in civil legal matters like representing victims of domestic violence to get protective orders, getting unemployment benefits, handling landlord tenant and foreclosure matters. We're the only agency providing this service. In your county, there are 1,561 eligible low-income persons who would qualify for our services. As an outside agency, we behave like an inside agency by helping county governments in three ways. We take the strain off your social services safety net by lifting clients out of poverty with enforceable court orders of child and spousal support, as well as unemployment benefits that the clients would not otherwise have won without our legal intervention. We help the county court system run efficiently by helping those who can't afford an attorney because pro se let against those without an attorney slow the system down considerably. And we assist local law enforcement agencies by securing enforceable civil protective orders for domestic violence survivors. We leverage your financial support to provide legal services that benefit your citizens. In the last fiscal year, 58 of your residents were assisted by our attorney, including several critical domestic violence cases. We obtained $86,000 in annualized support, housing and consumer benefits for your constituents. When you total the amount of real measurable financial help we give the residents of your county compared to the amount you would give us, that's an excellent return on your investment. Your county's poor citizens received more than $86,000 in enforceable court orders in the last fiscal year. And combined, all three of our offices last year obtained over $539,000 for our clients throughout the 17 counties that we serve. You have defunded us, and of course, you have the right to make that choice. When you decide to fund us, however, you're supporting not just our agency, but your police force, your court system, and your social service agencies. Your low-income constituents rely on us. And the Lancaster County support that we have received in the past made this community safer and more stable for everyone, not just our low-income clients. Finally, I'd like to talk about our fiscal situation. We run a tight and responsible ship. In deciding which nonprofits to support, I suggest that any county should have a vested interest in collaborating with any nonprofit that can show that it is well-run and serves the county's constituents. If counties only give to the ones that are in desperate financial straits instead of those that are prudent and save against hard times, that might make sense. But I would argue that the nonprofits that do the most good and are the best run are, and are the most financially stable, are the wisest investment. We have been advised by many grantors that they look to support nonprofits who follow fiscal best practices. As in your personal and your financial business life, our nonprofits set aside an extremely modest reserve to make sure that we could exist for three months in case of catastrophic loss of funding. I would be happy to email you a white paper on the subject published by the Urban Institute, which argues that it is fiscal malfeasance for a nonprofit to run with no policy of setting aside cash reserves. We follow that advice and are able to weather difficulties and funding peaks and valleys as a result. To suggest that we are well-off and don't need support is simply inaccurate. In the midst of a pandemic, when sheltering in place is one of the major features in the Health Department's guide to curbing the spread of the virus, your county needs the help of our dedicated staff attorneys to prevent unlawful evictions or foreclosures, to secure appropriate public benefits for low-income residents, and to protect them from abuse. I'd like you to please consider, reconsider the withdrawal of support for our agency so that you can truly support the justice for all that you pledge when you pledge allegiance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, fellow board members? No, no questions. No question. Any question? Well, we don't have any questions. Well, that's, okay. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is page 38, De Haven, Mrs. Jacob.
Got her on, Glenn? All right.
Good evening.
Hey, Ms. Jacob, how you doing?
I'm good. I'm good.
How's Paul?
He's wonderful. He's retired and enjoying every moment of it.
Good. Tell him I said hi.
I, however, am still working.
All right. All right. You have five minutes. And when you have one minute left, I'm going to wave this sign. And then after you're finished, we'll have question and answer session. Okay.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. I will take a lot of your time. Sent the information ahead of time. And as you will note from what I sent, we had 61 Lancaster County adults and four children who received advocacy services from your county. And we also provided shelter for 10 Lancaster County adults and two accompanying children during the last fiscal year. And in addition to shelter, which I know is what we're known for, but in addition to shelter, we have a 24-hour crisis hotline. Until COVID, we did support groups. We're hoping to get those going again soon. We have provided court accompaniment throughout the pandemic. If the courts were open, juvenile and domestic relations court in Lancaster County, we had a staff person there to provide support to individuals who have been victims of domestic violence or sexual assault. We provide hospital accompaniment. And of course, we do have our shelter 24-hour intake as needed. We have Hispanic services. We have someone who can assist victims of domestic violence with visa options that are available to them. We have someone who can help victims of domestic violence or sexual assault who are experiencing disability issues in filing for disability claims. And we have a very robust children's program and a very robust, lost my train of thought, prevention program as well. We're trying to put more effort into preventing domestic violence and sexual assault in the hopes that one day we'll put out the, put the intervention part out of the picture. I can't see you, so I don't know if you waved a flag at me or not, but I just, I feel like I can answer your questions if there's any that you had on the information that I sent you.
Okay, we have, you have two minutes left if you want to.
I'm good. I'm happy to answer questions. We appreciate your support. We're asking for level funding. We have had, as everyone has had, a rough year fundraising and our thrift shop was closed for a period of time due to COVID. So we are really struggling to keep things going, but we've done well so far. And we would appreciate your support in helping us into the next year.
We have one board member that wants to make comments or question. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm Supervisor Larson. Let me just say, I appreciate the financial information that you provided, the clarity of it. These financial statements are very easy to read and look through. So again, it's much appreciated. And the fact that we've had an opportunity to look at them is also very beneficial to me. I do note in your statements that ending for June 30th, 2020, that you had a change in net assets of almost $90,000. And your net assets at the beginning of the year started out with 674,000. They stood at the end of the year at 764,365 as a result. And it looks to me like you do have people that, as I would, very much support your activity. I guess my question is to you is why, why do you feel it's necessary to come to the county for $4,000?
Okay. I appreciate that question. First of all, our funders, our federal and state funders, that is a question that they ask us when we are applying. They want to see that you, not just you, but the five counties that we serve, support the programs that we provide. And so that is a question that they ask us, but it's also very necessary for us to get this grant funding. We have to provide a match, typically 20% for any federal and state funding that we get. So this is part of what goes towards that match.
Okay. Now, I understand the match situation, but let me ask you this. In terms of expressing the county's support, couldn't we write you a very nice letter, given that, like I say, you are accumulating surpluses here and have built up a 764,000, some odd change of total net assets? Could we do that?
Right. But we are, that includes our building and doesn't, that's not cash that we can use for operations.
Well, okay. I'm just looking at your change in net assets. It's an issue for me, as it is for at least one other member of the board. When we're trying to, we're trying to address all of the requirements that are coming our way. And it may seem like when we're quibbling over $4,000, from your point of view, you may say, well, why are they doing that? And the answer to that is, is that, at least to me in any respect, when we're reaching into the taxpayer's pocket, these same people that could go ahead and donate on their own, any dollar amount is significant. And if we're going to do this sort of thing and review a budget, we should be looking at all of them. So, you know, I totally admire what you do. I totally understand the service that you provide. But I still come back to that same question. When I'm looking at what I believe actually is a change in your cash situation of $90,000, it just seems to me like the $4,000 that we give you every year, I'd just like to take a step away from that.
All right, I'm looking, I'm pulling up my financial reports.
It's on the first page there, June 30th, you know, with the documentation you submitted for us.
Because I have to look and see if that also includes the PPP loan that we received. I'm pulling these up now.
See, if you're looking at that, it's labeled page number three after the, you know, your auditor's statement, opening statement. But clearly to me, we're talking, we're talking not, you know, liquid assets here. When we talk about your total public support and revenues line and then go down to your total, you know, your total expenditures line, that's where you get the difference between the two. And this last year was $90,000. So I just ask you, if you would do anything at all, just come back to Mr. Gill and tell him what the impact is on your matching, because that would have a, that would have a bearing for me. Otherwise, I just really have a difficult time supporting this. Can I ask you to do that?
Yes, I will. I will get back with him.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, Ms. Jacob, have some fun. Have a good one now.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is Ms. Hart. That's page 41. Hi, Mrs. Hart.
Hello.
Good.
Good evening.
You're fine. You have five minutes. And when you have one minute left, I will raise this sign. Can you see it?
Yes. And I promise you, this won't take me five minutes.
All right. Okay, time is yours.
I want to thank you to the board and to the county staff for being a county that supports your local history and acknowledges the importance of it. We, as the museum and library and historical society, are very pleased to be your partner in ensuring that our community residents and visitors have access to our history, particularly the preservation and operation and care of two of our treasured buildings, which belong to the county, which are the old clerk's office and the old jail. And you have entrusted us to care for those and operate those and include them as part of the public facilities that visitors and residents can enjoy as part of the museum and library. So we are seeking level funding again for those costs associated just with those buildings and our operation and exhibition of history there. So that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. All right, sir.
Ms. Hart, I have a disconnect between what you say your mission is and what we have, at least I have, requested in the past. We have a room with portraits all around. And I know who two of these people are, but I don't know who the other people are. Well, actually, I requested, and you don't have to do what I request, don't get me wrong, but I requested that the museum could give a short biography of who these people are and their meaning to Lancaster County. I can tell you that I have been in this room when a whole group of people walked in the door and looked at the portraits. And they were looking for one particular one, and they did find that person. So they already knew ahead of time, I guess. They just wanted to see the portrait. But if it's at all possible, regardless of the money that you get, I think it would be a very good thing for the people who are in this room, the portraits that are in this room, to be identified and their relationship to the county. And if that wouldn't be a hardship for your staff, that would be greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
I know you did request that, I believe, two years ago. And I did provide Mr. Gill with a booklet that we have in our resources that has a list and small biographies of most of the portraits. And if there's something beyond that that you need, I'd be happy to discuss that. I'd also would say we are always happy to try to help the county out with questions of history and believe we have done so in the past year with, especially when there were questions that came up about the history and accuracy of information that was being given out about structures and buildings on the county green. And also just recently in providing some information to Mr. Sadler about the courthouse construction. So we are here to be a resource to you. So we, if you have specific questions, please do let us know.
Hey, Karen, this is Don. I think the disconnect may be that, yes, you did provide me that booklet of information, but then my staff would have to go through and actually pick out, you know, the information that was relevant to these portraits. And I think what Dr. Westbrook is stating, that your And I think what Dr. Westbrook is stating, that your staff is more of the expert in that regard and could pick out that information and maybe prepare just a little, uh, paragraph that we could put on some type of little plaque that would go under each one of these portraits. So I think that may be the disconnect, that while you have provided all of that information to me, uh, you know, I've got to do something with it. And to be honest with you, my staff is thin and, and stretched now, so, and you all have the expertise, whereas we don't.
Okay, certainly, we can work on that. That is, um, did not understand that that was how you wanted the information delivered. So, um, you know, I am a staff of one, but I will try to work on that as well as encourage, uh, volunteers that we have to help with that information so that you can have a succinct, uh, piece of information about each portrait.
Yeah, that was something I was thinking about and having it, you know, I'll be honest with you, professionally done for each portrait. Where, so if I can walk in here and take a, cause I, I'm interested in who these people, who are they? All right, and I'm walking in, I can stand at each picture, uh, picture and read something about each one of them and what they, what their contributions was to Lancaster County.
I, I think once we have a little, the blurb of information, then we can send that out to a company of some kind of a manager to those plaques.
I, yeah, I mean, if, if, uh, if Ms. Hart and her staff could, or her volunteer staff, could, uh, could, you know, just create a paragraph about each one of these portraits.
I envision like one of those brass, black brass plaques that are like engraved, just where the brass comes out of the block.
Yeah, and just, just, just give that to me. We can, we can have something done professionally and, and, and put on the wall here under each one.
And quite frankly.
I want to say, it looks really good over there. I was over taking some pictures, because we get a lot of questions about the portraits and, uh, people want to find, you know, their ancestors and, and ones that are hanging there. So, um, you know, I have taken some photography of them and I hope that we can work together maybe to produce these plaques and, and, you know, a handout or something that would be beneficial to, to all of us.
That'd be nice, yeah.
I think it would be nice if you had school groups, which you've indicated that you do. Uh, you're just across the street, basically. And this is a very historic building, as you've indicated, and these are very historic people. I don't happen to know what their relationship is to the county yet. I will after I read your plaque.
Well, we'll take you on a tour as well.
But the kids would probably appreciate that too, uh, help, help with that. So, thank you.
Yes, that's great. We, we are happy to include the courthouse, uh, in part of our tour and, uh, encourage visitors. And you've always been very welcoming to have people come into the vestibule and into the, uh, the meeting room to see those portraits. So we appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. All right, any, any additional questions or comments, sir? Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Thank you.
All right. All righty.
Do you have Kathy and Brandon, Glenn? You may have some others, because Kathy indicated to me that, uh, a board member or two from Lancaster may zoom in as well.
All right, this is Northern Act Soil and Water Conserv, Conservation District, page forty-four.
Would be Fay Andrasco and Billy McCarty.
They keep adding that five thousand.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello, welcome. Uh, you have five minutes.
Thank you.
You have five minutes to speak, and it, and when you get down to one minute, can you see my sign? I'm gonna wait the one-minute sign, so you have additional, you have a less, well, left one minute to speak after that. And then after that, we have question and answer. And after that, we have question and answer session. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, to point out, when we're presenting, we can no longer see, um, inside the meeting room. We're seeing a double screen of ourselves right now.
Oh, you are?
Keep it brief.
Hold on a minute. Can you do anything with that? You can't.
Okay. Okay, so you can hear us, you just can't see us?
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, okay, you can wait and start.
All right, good evening. We hope we find each of you well. Your families have, um, survived the pandemic well so far, and hopefully there's some light at the end of the tunnel coming for all of us to get back to normal. Um, our district programs have run, um, with few adjustments of how we interact with the public and how we interact with each other here in the office over these last twelve months. But we have still provided the same level of services, um, to our agriculture community, to our citizens. Um, we have come up with some solutions for providing some of our educational programs to our K through twelve students by offering some virtual learning experiences. Um, we've continued offering the cost share programs, uh, through the Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program, as well as the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program. Um, for simplistic terms, the VAX program is agriculture, and the VCAP program is for what we would deem as, as much, um, non-ag or urban as our area could support. Um, we have also assisted the county in hosting the annual hazardous waste collection. Um, that was a big event in the fall. And our request this year is for fifteen thousand. Uh, this is our fifteenth year requesting fifteen thousand. This is our ninth, I'm sorry, this is our ninth year requesting fifteen thousand. This is our fifteenth year receiving ten thousand dollars from the county. Um, we do make that request of fifteen thousand from each of the four counties that we serve. Um, some statistics, uh, provided in the letter that we submitted. Um, in fiscal year, this would have been nineteen twenty, fiscal year twenty. Um, we dispersed two hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents to Lancaster County farmers and landowners for the implementation of conservation practices. Um, for VCAP, we did not have any funded projects, but we did identify four new possible projects, monitored the status of one waitlisted project, and provided technical assistance on two additional projects that were not eligible for funding. Um, through the Resource Management Plan, which was a pilot project for us through the state, we dispersed thirty thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents on prop land for Lancaster County farmers and landowners. Um, our educational programs, as I said, that we have gotten a little creative with those and offering some virtual learning experiences. We were, in the fall of nineteen, able to provide two of our, um, classroom components, uh, courses to Lancaster County sixth graders. And then, of course, when schools closed in the fall of twenty twenty, uh, we were able to, um, finish that outdoor experience at Bellisle State Park for our students. We do continue to offer, um, the memorandum of understanding and offering services for the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and helping the county with their ag assessments. I'll point out once again that this document is only the legal tool that we need to conduct that work. It does not obligate the county to any additional funding. It only outlines a funding, um, schedule, if you will, based on the level of funding, the number of ag assessments that we would provide on an annual basis. But signing that document does not obligate the county into paying anything. It clearly says that the annual contribution falls below fifteen thousand, there will be zero CBPA ag assessments performed that year. Um, Brandon, do you have any?
That's pretty much it. Uh, just, if there's any questions, um, she pretty much went over just, uh, most of what we do, but, um, if there's any questions, we can elaborate on.
Okay, all right, Mr. Bellis?
Um, I have a quick question. Uh, first of all, I'll just say thank you all for what you do. I think this is one of the best return of investments of money that we spend of what comes back to the taxpayers here in Lancaster County. Um, could you have any information on, uh, living shorelines or what y'all have provided or growing that aspect of, of what's from your, how many projects or undertaken? Cause there's been a fair amount of grant money that's been allotted to that, correct?
Yes, um, most of our VCAP practices in Lancaster County end up, um, are living shoreline practices. Um, we provide a lot of technical assistance for them and get them on a waitlist, but, um, and get them ready, but the, the funding throughout the state has been short on that. Um, so it's been hard to get a lot of them funding. So we're getting like one or two at a time, even though we're doing the technical assistance, getting them on the list, getting the paperwork ready for when the funding is available, then we can, uh, help the, help the homeowner out with, um, some cost share on that.
But you, but like you said, a fair amount of work is going into the prep work. At least they're in the pipeline, pipeline to be funded if funding from the state.
Correct, yes. They're in the pipeline on a waitlist. Um, I mean, we had, just for instance, I mean, I, I don't have it by county, but today we had, uh, four calls on shorelines that we know are in the pipeline of possibly coming up in, in, between Northumberland and Lancaster today. We had four calls just today for living shoreline projects that, um, want to be put on, put into the waitlist and, and get, get in the pipeline.
Even if we're making some progress on this, which it sounds like we are, that's a good thing, not only for financially for those landowners, but it's a good thing for the Chesapeake Bay and water quality. So thank you all.
You make a request of all of the counties that you're working with for fifteen thousand?
Yes, sir.
All right, and, and, uh, how many counties you work with?
Four, Lancaster, Northumberland, Richmond, and Westmoreland Counties.
And, uh, we're the only one that doesn't pay the fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, Mr.?
Thank you, thank you for asking that, because I was looking for the documentation.
Okay, well. Mr. Larson?
Ready?
Yeah. Neither one of you that you want to speak?
Well, I, I thought it was Jack, but I'm happy to. So if I understand correctly, if we don't give the fifteen thousand, we don't get the same level of service from you, because you do, I'm, I'm not quite sure how to say it, but you do checks that, that are required. You do inspections or investigations or something. Is that correct or close to being correct?
Are you referring to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, the ag assessments?
Perhaps so. If we give you fifteen thousand, you give us so many ag assessments. If we give you ten thousand, we have less ag assessments. Is that correct?
The, the offerings that we have, um, in trying to be fair to all of the counties, our district is not, we don't receive any state funding for performing ag assessments. Um, the state looks to the counties to fund their own, um, enforcement of the Chesapeake Bay Act. So when the checklist comes around for the counties, whether the ag assessments have been performed, we're in a situation where the districts are the ones that are, I would say by code and by the nature of our work, we're probably the best entity to perform those ag assessments. We have access to the information and we understand what the requirement is. Um, but the county is the one that's fiscally responsible for those and implementing them. What we have tried to offer is a, offering of our services that tacked on for the level of funding of fifteen thousand for each county that was able to afford that, we would provide in return two ag assessments each year. And then we laid out a pay schedule or a fee schedule, if you will, where incrementally, if your annual contribution went up, we would add a couple of ag assessments. Um, for funding level at ten thousand, that would be below the fifteen thousand dollar request, we would provide zero ag assessments. However, there's two components to this. One is having the, um, the signed memorandum of agreement or of understanding, MOU. Um, this is the legal vessel that allows us to perform this work for Lancaster County. Whether or not you fund that work is the second component of this. Um, but signing this MOU, which we've offered for the last couple of years, that is a get out of jail free card, if you will. That allows us and just sets up the parameters of how the work could be performed. The funding then comes in as a second mechanism of, were you able to fund it? And what we have told our localities is, this presents a great opportunity when DEQ comes in and checks every year, that you can say, yes, we have a, a system in place. We have this MOU with our local soil and water conservation district. However, it's an unfunded mandate that we're not able to financially support. That puts the ball back in your court. However, until we have a signed MOU, our district can't perform any of these works. So that's just where we are. Um, we would love to leave the fifteen thousand from Lancaster County, then we could feel like we were providing the same level of services to all of our localities.
Well, let's consider this. Let's consider that perhaps we can do our own ag assessments. And then what is the value of your organization to us, except for the volunteers that you provide for the recyclables twice a year or once a year, whatever you choose to do, once a year now, I guess. So if we can do our own ag assessments, which is one of the, the values to your organization, uh, but if we can do those ourselves, then it seems to me that of the things you've listed, the recyclable volunteers are it. Uh, that's all that's left. Is, am I incorrect?
Yes, you're incorrect in that you're not seeing the true value of what we're offering. We are an agency of six full-time and one part-time staff. Um, we don't screen our calls based on the residents, which county they're calling from. They all get the same level of service. We have trained and certified professionals on staff that offer technical assistance on a myriad of different aspects, um, from erosion and sediment control, um, to even ag stewardship complaints. I mean, a lot of our work is weather-based. The more rainfall we receive, the more erosion we tend to have here on the Northern Act. So we are constantly receiving inquiries, even if they're not generated from your board or from the administrator's office. The residents are still contacting us, um, and we're here to serve them. Um, I believe what we're looking at is just the, the coming together and recognizing that our local programs and our education outreach programs that we offer are not funded with state dollars. We are looked at, uh, just as a lady mentioned earlier, the state is looking for some matching support, um, matching financial support from the localities for us to be able to put on these local programs.
So what you're telling us, you're sup, you're supplying us with more than just ag assessments? Okay.
Yep.
To make it clear for us, what is ag assess, what does that entail?
I'll defer to Brandon on those. The DEQ requirements, um, we have a footprint of what they're asking for. And to answer Mr. Westbrook's question, Dr. Westbrook's question, you would have to go to DEQ to see if the county is qualified to perform their own ag assessments. That's a level of detail that we would not be able to offer. Um, we just know that in our situation with having the relationships built with the local agricultural community, having the access information to the maps, the USDA information farm and track, um, that's information that the county and any other entity is not going to have. Um, we have cooperative, it's protected information. And we have those cooperative agreements in place with USDA and the participants, um, to access that information and to provide you those ag assessments without divulging, um, that privately protected information.
Okay, gentlemen, any, any additional questions?
I guess, I guess the only question I got, we, we budgeted ten thousand dollars last year. So other than the waste collection, what did we get for our ten thousand dollars?
The school programs, you get our technical support. If the county had any issues come about, um, one of the hot topics right now, of course, are solar farms. We have staff standing, ready and able to assist, um, to help with solar.
I understand, I understand, those are things available, but I'm saying, what did, what was actually delivered to Lancaster County for ten thousand dollars last year?
School programs, one household hazardous waste event. Um, I believe, I don't have a figure right here, but there were numerous ag stewardship complaints that we were brought in to serve as a liaison between the regulatory agency and our citizens.
At the beginning of the presentation, you gave a few numbers of dollar amounts of money that was spent in Lancaster County. What were those numbers again?
So for the Virginia Ag Cost Share Program, that was two hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred eighty, excuse me, two hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, um, paid out to Lancaster County farmers or landowners. For the Resource Management Plan, that yielded thirty thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents paid out to Lancaster County, uh, farmers and landowners as well.
So that's roughly about three hundred thousand dollars of, uh, return on investment?
Yes, sir, that's put back into the local economy, yes.
So our, our fifteen, or ten thousand leverage is three hundred thousand dollars worth of assets?
But would they have gotten that with their, this, this, uh... But would they have gotten that with this, this agreement here? I mean, because that's not money. I mean.
Is there a match tied to that state money?
I think the disconnect is the three hundred thousand that Mr. Bellows just stated for the various cost share programs to farmers is state-funded money, correct?
Correct.
That's not a return on local dollars. That's, that's state money, correct?
But it's state money that they manage that goes out to our constituents, correct?
Correct.
So, they're managing that money and so it's funneling through their management to get to our people. So, our fifteen thousand dollars is leveraging three hundred thousand dollars worth of assets in Lancaster County. That's the way I see it.
The question is.
To me, to me, in evaluating these things, it's not how much they're, how they're running their operations, it's what value they bring for the money that it costs. How they pay their employees or how they manage their line item budgets, I don't care about. That's their job to do. My job is to manage this budget and then to look at each individual item and see what value it does to our constituents. And to me, what I'm looking at is that there's three hundred thousand dollars that they're managing of state money that's coming into Lancaster County that we're paying only ten thousand dollars for. That's a really good internal investment.
The, the question is, is there anyone here at the county level that can help funnel that state money to where it belongs, or do we need these people to do it?
We don't, we don't have the staff to do what they, what they do.
This is just like any other regional thing that we work together, like the Northern Ex district planage that manages all these federal grants. There's got to be a managing agency for these federal grants or operations and they work because regionally we work together and they get the federal money and then they, the region, the Northern Ex Soil and District Water funnels that out to the districts based on the needs. And so, that's how that, that money gets managed and spent.
This organization has good value. I, I used to work closely with them, but it's been forty, thirty, forty years now. So, I haven't really kept up with what's going on, but they have value for us.
The educational programs that they do for, for the youth in the community are phenomenal. Y'all do an excellent job with those programs. I haven't seen them during the COVID time, but prior to that, the mobile things you brought to schools and the programs you did, I did some of them with my kids when I was teaching earth science. They're phenomenal and they're worth every penny.
And the work they do with our local farmers and stuff is good, too.
I, I think that's all well and good. The issue is, do we need to throw money at them to make that happen? And, and I have a problem with that and have had a problem with it for some time.
I, I don't, not, because I think they fall.
Otherwise, the questions I had, Dr. Westbrook, you had on and Mr. Lee.
Okay, well, okay. All right, this, this is a conversation between us, so unless you all got something else to say, or we got some more questions for you, I'm gonna say goodnight.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have anybody else that's not on this list that's sitting out there?
Did Billy raise his hand, please? He didn't?
All right, Mr. Shakatana, I'm thinking this is the Northern Ex Food Bank. They got HH Bank, all right.
Yeah, but it's Healthy Harvest.
Oh, Healthy Harvest, okay.
But you're both right, because we're in the process of legalizing our name change.
Okay, page thirty-nine.
Okay, and, and so, I am here once again, and I know there's a lot of conflict surrounding it. But I am here as representing the chairman of the board of Healthy Harvest Food Bank and its remaining founding director. And you see a request in front of you, and I don't want to repeat all the data that you can read. I know we have provided you with also our annual report available, and so you'll, you'll be able to see regarding our successes. The one thing that I, the one point I want to make is we serve six counties. In Lancaster County alone, this year, we are serving over two thousand and seventy-two people on a weekly basis. We deliver more goods and services to Lancaster than any other county. And, and Jason, you were talking about leverage a little while ago. Last year, you funded us with one thousand dollars. We delivered eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars worth of food and programs to Lancaster County. That's pretty, pretty incredible leverage. And in addition to that, because of COVID, we are now serving an additional two hundred and sixty-seven families. The, the annual report that you showed, chose, one thousand eight hundred and five families served. And now, we have an additional two hundred and sixty-seven that we're serving in the county. We also are serving a hundred and two seniors in our senior-only programs and a hundred and twenty children through our Backpack Buddy programs. And we are successful. I am more proud of the Healthy Harvest Food Bank than I am any other nonprofit I've ever been associated with in my life. I think we do an incredible job. We manage money well. Ninety-six percent of our, of our revenue stream goes back into the communities that we serve. And we are in the process of actually trying, and you can read our annual report, an aquaponics program where we'll be raising fish. And those tilapia or striped bass will then nurture plants inside of a hothouse. It's going to be, we have talked to all four school superintendents, or six school superintendents that we serve. They are really anxious to get that program going. We still need to build it. But the idea behind it is to teach children, come in in the fall, you, you plant your plants during the course of the year. You harvest it. We harvest the fish, the food. We have a demonstration kitchen that we're building. And we're trying to educate children and open their eyes in our next phase. We're also cooperating with, with the Free Health Clinic in a in healthy eating for type-two diabetes individuals. And we piloted that in Lancaster and then over in Essex County. And we can continue to try to expand on that as, as COVID is, is going to wane for us. So, we've got, we've got a lot of things going on. We do have an increased request this year because of the increased need. We're serving almost twenty percent of this county. That's enormous. And the question that I would ask, if it wasn't for Healthy Harvest Food Bank, how would we get those people fed in Lancaster County?
Guess a question I got, did we get a tax break, did you all get a tax break from Richmond?
That is a great question. They have told us now for two years, we have asked everything that, we have done everything that they've asked. They have said they are quote considering it. Last year, we paid over ten thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars in taxes to Richmond County. And we are the only food bank in the state of Virginia that doesn't have a real estate tax or a personal property tax exemption. We are livid about it and we have approached our congressman and our delegate. And we are trying right now to get it institutionalized, because there are two food banks in Virginia that are actually built into the code as exempted from taxes. And, and so, we are now taking that approach and going over the head of Richmond County to try to get it done at the state level.
You can move it back to Lancaster County.
Pardon?
You can move the operation back to Lancaster County.
If we can move a two and a half million dollar building, I'd do it. In a heartbeat right now, Jason.
I mean, I have heartburn over the way that that situation with Richmond County was handled, but I have no problem supporting this request, because I think it's important that, that we do what we can to help the most needy in this community. And y'all do do a good job of leveraging volunteers and a small amount of money into a big investment for people that have been really hurting. And for an educational standpoint, if kids come to school hungry, they can't learn.
That's exactly right.
What's the greatest portion or percentage that you serve as far as age-wise?
It, it goes, we, we serve families, earnest, and so with that, you know, when, when people drive up and get a box of food, there may be a two-year-old, an infant, and there may be a seventy-five-year-old on the same family. Those statistics are available. I just don't have them with me.
Any further questions?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Paul, my friend.
Hey, Jack.
I wish your executive director would come tonight. I don't like to get after you. But I see the world differently than Mr. Bellows. I see the world differently than you do. And I look at your financial highlights here, and I see that last year, which I still have, that you increased your net assets by two hundred and one thousand, four hundred. I say you, the food bank. This year, you increased your net assets by four hundred and thirty-five thousand, six seventeen. Yet, your executive director writes us a letter and asks for a five-fold increase in our contribution. Forget about the numerical amount. Just follow me on the principle of the thing. Doesn't mention the slightest thing about why it increased from a thousand to five thousand. And I just do not understand it, because like I say, you know, my philosophy is like, Dr. Westbrook's here. If we're going to take and reach into the taxpayer's pocket, if we're going to hold that taxpayer, if they don't pay their taxes, which include these contributions of whatever amount, we're going to take their home away from them. And this is people that are actually clients of the food bank. I have a reasonably good understanding of the food bank. I, I liked the way you talked about Mr. Barton in that letter that you wrote. And I knew Mr. Barton personally, and I was personally involved when he started the thing up. But this is just like every other thing. The camel gets its nose in the tent and there you go, off and running. So, I do not support this request, but I do look forward to working with you in the future.
Yes, Jack, I, I knew a hundred percent you would not.
Thank you.
Well, and my concern, trying to be consistent throughout this evening, this afternoon, what we got in the package, the supporting documents was your request and a letter. Now, tonight, we get a letter and this, but there was a deadline to provide us with supporting documents so that we could look through this. And my expectation would be that the supporting documents would say why you need the money. Not just you're doing a great job, you're expanding everything, but specifically, where do you spend your money? Why do you need more money? And, and it's a disappointment to me, just as it was to the other people who did the same thing. It isn't that I don't appreciate what you do. I do appreciate what you do very much. I also see it growing and growing, so that each year is going to be more and more money you're going to request because you're feeding more and more people. But that's up to the future, not up to me. My main thing here is that I would very much appreciate having the supporting documentation by the deadline. Everything we need to understand what you're doing, not that we're going to micromanage that, but why you need additional money of the amount that you've asked, a five-fold increase, five-hundred percent increase, when in fact you did all these things without that money. So, thank you.
All right, doctor, thank you. And I, I will say one thing. And it was mentioned earlier by one of the, the other members, the other solicitors for your funding.
Alms seekers.
There, there is value. We, we, we submit a lot of grant requests each year. And some of the questions we get asked, do all your counties support you? We, the last two years, have been able to say, yes, they support us. And the other question is, do you as a board member, do we get a hundred percent participation from our board members when we're asking for money from individuals? And the answer to that is yes. And, and, and so, whether you decide to fund at five thousand, I would appreciate at least some funding so that we can say that we have six counties and they all support what we're doing.
Well, again, it's no question about the worth of what you do, of what the Healthy Harvest Food Bank does. That's not the question, but we are trying to look at all the money, and there's more and more organizations and, and within the county itself, agencies, departments in the county that require more money. And it gets hard, it gets difficult to try to figure that out.
Yes.
Do we have any additional questions?
And we're working on another committee that I hope over the years is going to help that situation.
I hope so, too. I hope so, too. And I support that.
I know you do. And I do appreciate your time and your comments, and I will get back to, to our CEO and tell him that next time, we need a better preparation case statement to you guys.
Well, just on time, and again, explaining.
Yes. I fully, I fully understand that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, guys, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, I'm thinking this is it, right, Mr. County Administrator?
Unless you all, unless you all want to make some decisions on some of the ones you've heard tonight.
I just assume not. I'm getting cranky, Mr. Chairman.
I'm thinking that's the best.
But, but I would like to just bring up a couple of things before we close. I've already, I, I have a situation on the eighth of April where we're scheduled to, you know, approve the school budget. I have a longtime friend who passed away in January, sudden heart attack. And I've involved in his memorial service on the ninth of April. I've tried every way I can. It's in Columbus, Ohio. Tried every way I can to figure out a way to get there and still be at this meeting and, or at least be connected by Zoom. And none of it's, none of it's come to pass. So, I would request yours and the board's consideration in looking at an alternative date, the following week of, say, Tuesday, I think it's the thirteenth, right, Doug?
All right, so we have April the eighth, but you're going to be wait, isn't it April the eighth?
You have your public hearing on the school budget on April first. You have to wait seven days to come back to a doc.
So.
So, that's what that meeting on April the eighth is.
So, you're saying you can't make April the eighth?
I just don't see how I can. And if put to, if put to it, I, I would simply not be here that night and I would.
We can.
Did we not just sort of give them the nod last year, the last couple of years, and then approved it at a later date officially?
Yes.
So, can't we basically on the first give them the nod if we so choose and then actually adopt it and fiscally appoint it on our regular meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Actually, we've already given them a nod, when you think about it, when they came before us all. And an earlier nod there when Mr. Bellows.
Not that we don't have to have another special meeting for no real purpose, other than to come out and say, we've cast a vote and say five minutes and we're done and go home.
Well, I think that, you know, that's one of those meetings where it started at seven, but I had a five o'clock work session if needed on the budget. And I think we're probably going to need it.
Yeah.
So, I, I think we're going to need another meeting date. If it's not the eighth, we're going to need at least.
That I would like to be a part of, obviously, that work session.
Well, can that work session be on the twenty-ninth?
No, because I've got to advertise your budget if you're going to stay on this schedule. I've got to advertise your budget on the fifteenth of April.
So, it has to be after the eighth?
Yeah, and, and if we meet on the thirteenth, that's going to be too late, because I can't get the ad to the paper in time.
But, but if the, what we're looking at now is the, the minimum time from the advertisement to the decision.
Yeah.
And if, I don't see why we can't extend.
You, you can, but you all adopted a calendar and I'm trying to stick to it.
What I'm trying to make is like, we, like you said, we've already pretty much given a nod to the school system. There's not a much, it's a level-funded budget for all, it is level-funded now.
It's my understanding, unless that's going to be a different budget, it's going to be a capital improvement budget, that there's another consideration they want to have for us. Am I incorrect?
The school board has requested a closed meeting with the board on April first, which is your date of the public hearing. So, and Mr. Penn, you know, I asked you about that.
Capital budget is different from the regular operating.
I don't know if it's that or not.
Well, with the calendar you adopted, we could include the capital improvement budget with your operating budget, adopt everything on April twenty-ninth.
Can we basically still carry forward with the public hearing on the first? Skip having that official meeting necessarily and then just have the work session? And I mean, you can go ahead and advertise the budget as it is right now.
Well, I've already advertised, the school budget is being advertised. I'm talking about the county budget is what I need to advertise on the fifteenth.
On Thursday, when we have our meeting, we hear from the rest of the, the agencies and then we'll have a complete picture of, we've heard from everybody. We can make whatever decisions that night and you can advertise that budget.
If you think you can do it all Thursday night, I, I got my doubts.
Well, I do, too. And, and I do recognize that that work session is a big part, and I do recognize that I would miss that. So, that, again, it's a consideration I ask. And, and I know that we can't do it like on the, on the sixth or the seventh. or the 7th because the seven days haven't passed. But again, you know, we don't necessarily have to finalize the budget on the 29th of April. That was an ambitious schedule.
What about the 12th, their Monday? We could do it on the 12th?
I don't see anything scheduled on the 12th.
I know, what he's saying is move the April 8th meeting to April 12th. How's y'all scheduled? Glenn?
All right, you got a problem with 12?
If it doesn't work, then I can also.
12 be all right?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
12 be all right?
I don't have my phone, but I'm going to say it's all right.
That's on Monday.
I'll move it to the 12th.
I'll make it all right.
If there's a problem with your staff.
Yeah, I mean, whatever decisions we make on the 12th, if they're confident, if they're satisfied with the budget, I can get it to the paper by noon on the 13th. It'll advertise on the 15th, and we'll still be on schedule.
All right, so everybody in agreement with that one? Okay. Do I need a vote on that?
Yeah, you need to change your date, yes.
All right, everybody in favor of changing the meeting on April the 8th to April the 12th, raise your hands, say aye.
At 7, at 5 or what time?
At the same time.
It would be, it's going to be a work session at 5 and adopt the budget at 7.
That's on the 12th.
That's on the 12th.
All those in favor of that?
All right, all right.
All right, okay, unanimous.
Fried chicken that night?
What's that?
Fried chicken.
We can do that. We can do that.
Before you adjourn to the next, whatever you're going to do, I just ask, don't know if it's appropriate here, but I would like, by the time this is all done, I would like for us to agree that we would require every agency that comes before us, every non-government organization, to provide us with the most current tax return, because that's where you really get a lot of this information, and they all have it, they have to have had it. We just, we haven't required it of everyone. We've left it up to the organizations to give the supporting documentation they thought we needed, but I'm requesting that that be part of the package. They can still tell us all the wonderful things they're doing, but I would like for us, at a minimum, to have the most recent tax returns. So I just wanted to think about that.
The language that I put out has historically said, submit your most recent financial statements. It didn't specifically state tax returns, and I think Dr. Westbrook would like for it to specifically state tax returns.
Well, I'm not a financial person. I've said that to you guys more than once, but I do the best I can with what I have, and I'm not as willing to look at someone's report as I am to look at the official report, and that's what I'm asking for.
And it doesn't matter what you ask for, you're still going to get this.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. I mean, that's all.
Some of those things have some valuable information in there because it lays out like the percentages and numbers and data that they provide.
I'm not saying, not to accept that, I'm just saying in addition.
How much they pay their employees doesn't make any difference to me. That's irrelevant data to me. It makes absolutely no decision on my decision on funding their operation because that's an internal operational decision, not a, it has no variance on like how they run their operation or the return of value to the county.
I agree with you on that one.
How they run their operation is important because they're supposed to be good stewards of the public's money if we give them public money.
I see them being good stewards of the public money if they're providing a valuable service to the community.
Well, I mean, it's going to bother you to get it.
You are, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to leave it here.
Okay, all right.
So you don't have runoff or no, and just put it back in my spot?
And I will, I'll prepare another sheet like this for Thursday. It's going to be less because we've got the 6 o'clock meeting with the broadband authority. So it's, I believe it's, it's either 5 or 6 folks who will be here on Thursday.
That starts at 5, too, so.
It starts at 5.
Those last night, we are.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, unless we got anything else, then I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor of not adjourned to Thursday, March 25th at 5:00 PM, raise your hands, say aye. Aye. Dr. Westbrook?
No, yeah, I do.
All right, all right. All right, guys, we are adjourned.